To order, it's six thirty P M on Monday, March the eighth. And this is the committee of the whole Administration Finance Committee meeting for the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal for the month of March. Like to welcome everyone to the meeting and I see we have two ladies waiting in the gallery. I guess it's a pretty far away gallery, but welcome ladies as well. Get a better introduction a little bit later. So the meeting has been called to order and now the Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Can I have a mover? I have Councillor Cameron and seconded by Councillor Dillabaw to approve the agenda as circulated. Those in favor? Motion is carried. And item number three on the agenda is disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening? So no disclosures and the minutes will so reflect. And so now I'm at item number four on the agenda, which is business arising from the previous committee meeting of the whole. And the minutes of that meeting were circulated with the package. Meeting was held on February the eighth. Are there any, is there any business arising from that meeting? I have one and I see Councillor Dillabaw has one. Councillor Dillabaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have on page one of sixty-three, number four, members request an updated discussion about the total ranch road improvements. It was noted staff is discussion is in discussion in North Granville will report back to the committee. Is there anything to report back please on that?
So through, through, through the Chair, the, any work on total ranch road won't, won't be part of the twenty twenty-one budget. We're looking at it as part of the twenty twenty-two budget.
And go ahead, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Chair to the CEO, does that mean North Granville too? We're going to do it together in twenty twenty-two?
So we, we, we are certainly looking to coordinate that it would be in both budgets in twenty twenty-two. That is, that, that is at least the initial thought in, in both staffs will, will, will work together to get that included into their budgets.
Thank you.
And so I'm just going to follow up more precisely. North Granville is still lead.
That, that was sort of the direction that the committee provided. So we anticipate that North Granville would be the lead.
Thank you. And Councillor Cameron, you were next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my, it just works a word smithing. It's on page four of sixty-three and it's item of F, which is fourth quarter. And where it's at the bottom where it says moved by and seconded by them, it says committee received and received the report. I think one of those words should be reviewed.
Okay, smaller error in the minutes to be corrected?
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have business arising from those minutes? Okay, no other business arising? Then I'm going to move on to item number five on the agenda. By the way, there were two sets of minutes, it looks like, was there?
Yes.
Yes, there was another set of minutes from February the eighteenth, which was basically budget meeting number five. Is there any business arising from that? As fast as we go by. And then there was another, I think another seven minutes, about so on. This is just those two. All right. So now I'm at item number five on the agenda, which is delegations and presentations. And we do have Empac Municipal Property Assessment Corporation with us this evening. And so I have Kim Bennett and would Kim just give me a wave, please? Which one is Kim? Good evening, Kim. Thank you very much for coming. And Tracy McIntyre? Good. So now I'm assuming that both you ladies are from the Brockville Office of Empac? Is that correct?
No, I'm from the Brockville office and Tracy is our regional manager for Eastern Ontario. So she works out of the Pembroke office.
Okay, all right. Well, ladies, thank you very much for agreeing to make a presentation to council here this evening. We allow fifteen minutes for presentations such as yours and then there'll be follow-up questions from the committee. Now, I think I'll just take a minute and just go around. Can you see us all from where you're sitting?
I can see six of you.
Okay. Probably can't see Mr. Robertson.
So I can, I can see three people to your right and two people to your left.
Okay, so I'm going to start on my lap. And Councillor Dillabaw, if you just raise your hand, please. And, and then Councillor Cameron?
Hi.
And of course you know who I am and this is Deputy Mayor Tori Deja. And then Councillor Hunter. And then Mr. Jack Bradley is a citizen volunteer member of the committee. And the gentleman that you can't see is Mr. Dave Robertson, another volunteer member of the committee. So ladies, go ahead with your presentation. And are you going to use shared screen for that? We do have a PowerPoint presentation, looks like PowerPoint presentation paper copy in front of us.
Yeah, I can, I can either share my screen or Rebecca, I didn't know if you were going to put the presentation up, but I can certainly share my screen.
Okay, how, which way do we want it done?
Will you guys be able to see? Let me test my screen sharing here and then you guys can tell me if you can see it okay.
Well, the only problem is, is that if it's just the size of the squares that we're seeing, oh, go bigger, okay.
Just one second here. There, can you guys see that okay?
Yes, and it's full, and it's full screen, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, you can go ahead and we see, we see three panels off to the right-hand side of the screen, which is yourself and Tracy, well, just two panels, I guess.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Your Worship, for having us here today. We welcome the opportunity to present our municipal partnership information to the council today. So I am Kim Bennett and I am the Account Manager in the Municipal and Stakeholder Relations Department of Empac. And so I work out of the Brockville Office of the Eastern Ontario catchment. So I cover the Landarc Leeds and Granville portion of Eastern Ontario. And as I mentioned earlier, Tracy man, Tracy McIntyre is my manager. So she's our regional manager for Municipal and Stakeholder Relations in the Eastern Ontario area and she works out of the Pembroke office. So in the fall, we delivered our municipal partnership report. That report is fully available online at empac.ca. However, we wanted to share some highlights of that report as well as some local information with you today. The Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, also known as Empac, assesses and classifies every property in Ontario from single-family homes to commercial buildings, industrial factories and farmland. Our Ontario Property Database is one of the most complex in the world and has data on over five million properties. Collectively, those properties are worth three million dollars. The property assessments that we provide are the foundation of Ontario's property tax system, which generates over thirty billion dollars annually. This slide shows a breakdown of the property classes and their impact on that three trillion dollars in assessment. As you can see, the residential makes up the majority of the assessment dollars with ninety percent classified as residential across Ontario. Then up we have commercial, farm, industrial, special exempt, and finally multi-residential properties. The assessment system is made up of four key players. Those players are the Government of Ontario, Empac, municipalities and property owners. The government is responsible for setting legislation determining province, provincial assessments and taxation laws, as well as determining the education tax rates. At Empac, we determine property classifications for all property in Ontario in accordance with that legislation that the government has set forth. Municipalities determine their revenue requirements based on the assessment that Empac returns annually. And then they collect property taxes to pay for municipal services based on those revenues. And finally, property owners pay those taxes that fund community services and education taxes that fund public schools. As I noted, residential is the biggest player in our tax system, but farm property taxes are, we know is something that's near and dear to the municipality's heart. So I wanted to ensure that we gave some information on the farm tax class rebate program. So farmland makes up just shy of ten percent of Edwardsburg Cardinals assessment base. And there is a full webinar that was recorded on the farm property class tax rebate program. And that was done in tandem with Agrocorp in the fall. So you can find that on Empac's YouTube channel or on empac.ca. Alternatively, if you'd like more information on that, I can get that link to the YouTube video to Rebecca or to Melanie and they could share that out with you if you'd like more information. So just a brief overview of how the, the property taxes work and the classification of farmland properties. So properties that are approved for the program are eligible for a reduced tax rate of no more than twenty-five percent of the municipality's residential tax rate. Typically, the farm residence and one acre of land surrounding that is taxed at the residential tax rate. The property classification and value is determined by Empac and then eligibility in the program is determined by Agrocorp. The property tax rate is then determined at the municipal level. Here you'll see an overview of the timelines on the Agrocorp activities for the twenty twenty-one property tax year. So it shows a good schedule of how things work between applications and when they're due back and things like that. So Empac reports property information to Agrocorp on a monthly basis. So we feed them information on ownership changes. Agrocorp reviews this data to identify changes in ownership or other information that would warrant a program application. Applications are generally issued or filed in the year prior to the taxation year. So as an example, if Empac reports a change in ownership in twenty twenty, an application would be generated and sent out by Agrocorp in twenty twenty-one. Applications are issued through the year as changes are required. And if required during the property tax year, an application could be issued on request. So for example, if you had a farm property that wasn't being actively farmed and then a farmer purchased that property mid-year, that would warrant a new application being sent out mid-year versus waiting until the next year. The application deadline is August thirty-first of the year before the tax year. However, they may be accepted up to the end of the property tax year if there are circumstances that prevented them from being filed earlier. And again, that would be taken up with Agrocorp. If the deadline has been missed, the property owner must contact Agrocorp directly to discuss their situation. And we do oftentimes get those phone calls at Empac. And we do advise the property owner that they need to call Agrocorp if they've missed their filing deadline or if they've lost their application or something like that. So we do have a good working relationship with Agrocorp to ensure that the property owners get all of that information. And then properties that are determined to be eligible are reported to Empac on a monthly basis. So we have a two-way data sharing that we do with Agrocorp. And then we would change our system and then we would send notification to the municipalities to say the same. And this is the big hot topic that we hear from most municipalities and that's the next province-wide assessment update. So we don't yet know when the next province-wide assessment update will be or what the valuation date will be. So then the last provincial assessment was in twenty sixteen. And then we were set to have one in twenty twenty, but then the pandemic happened. So the Ontario government decided to pause our assessment update and we're still waiting direction on when that might be. So the property values continue to be based on the market as a January first, twenty sixteen valuation date. We do continue to analyze sales and review data and ensure that things are kept current. But each time we make a change to a property, whether there's an improvement or an addition or something like that, we use that January first, twenty sixteen valuation date, which means that every property in Ontario is continued to be valued at the same point in time and is taxed fairly. When COVID nineteen hit last March, which is crazy to think that that was a year ago now, our number one priority was supporting our municipal partners and our employees here at Empac. So during the first few weeks, Empac engaged our municipal liaison group and our municipalities to learn about the challenges, priorities and timelines. What we heard essentially set our agenda for twenty twenty. So four key things that we heard was that municipalities needed us to keep our business going with minimal disruption to services. We needed to continue capturing new assessment to support municipal tax bases. We needed to adjust our timelines to allow more processing and flexibility. So that meant changing our request for reconsideration deadlines and adding on a little bit of extra time to capture new assessment and offering a deferral of the municipal levy payment. So through collaboration and partnership with our municipalities, we achieved all of those things and more. Last year, we captured over thirty-seven point three billion dollars in new assessment, even with the pandemic. And we did that by finding new ways to get the information that we needed. And like I said before, we took two additional weeks past when we would usually have our cutoff for new assessment and we, to ensure that we could capture everything that we were able to last year. Of that thirty-seven point three billion, eighteen point five billion dollars was attributed to residential properties. The residential condominiums was a very big growing sector for us and that added on thirteen point three billion dollars. The commercial sector added in twelve point five billion dollars provincially and followed closely by the industrial sector with one point seven billion dollars. Farm came in at just slightly above eight hundred and fifty million dollars. So even before COVID, we understood how critical our municipal relationships were and that's not just with our four hundred and forty-four municipalities, but with our municipal association partners as well. And in twenty twenty, it became very apparent how crucial those partnerships were and those relationships were. We kept constant conversation going with municipal meetings, albeit virtually, and collaborating with our municipalities to find new ways to change how we assess properties. Because most construction projects kept going amid the shutdown, we needed to find ways to capture that assessment so that we could get the assessment dollars to your municipalities. So in doing that, we built a safe way for municipalities that had access to digital plans to electronically submit those to us and we would review those digital plans for assessment purposes. We launched a curbside pickup program and the program that we partook in at Edwardsburg Cardinal was we would actually come to the municipal office to view those building plans and use those for assessment purposes. So because we were in lockdown, we couldn't get out and physically inspect properties. And the staff at your municipality really need to be commended because Melanie and Terry and the building department were an integral part of the amount of assessment dollars that we were able to put on for the municipality last year. And in the coming slide, I'll speak a little bit to the assessment that we're already putting on for twenty twenty-one. And again, they've been so great to be helping us view those plans for assessment purposes. So this is our forecast for the assessment dollars that we're going to be putting on for twenty twenty-one. The numbers we really want to look at here, and I'm sure they're very small for you, but if you perhaps look at your handout, the bottom right number, so that's our forecast range. So Empac commits to getting eighty-five percent of the total forecast that we could be able to pick up. And that means properties that we know are completed or have been occupied and they're ready to be assessed. So you'll see that a hundred percent of that is seven point eight nine seven million dollars. So that is the forecast that is available in Edwardsburg Cardinal to be picked up. So we commit to picking up six point seven million dollars of that. But there are often times, like last year, we exceeded that number. So actually, we've, we've put on already two point eight million dollars, which is thirty-five percent of that target already, which for beginning of March, considering that we were in lockdown all of February, that's a really fantastic number. And I know I'm pumping their tires a lot, but Melanie and Terry and the building department were a really integral part of that. So we've gone out and done just one plan viewing at the municipal office and that's what that number is essentially attributed to. So what we do is we send them a, a listing or if I'm in a meeting with them, I'll let them know that we've got some plans that we want to pick up. And then through that, they pull the plans for us. We've got municipal or Empac staff that will come out and they view the plans and we put them on for assessment purposes. To close out the highlights of the municipal partnership report, we also look to the future in twenty twenty by transforming how we share our data with municipalities. So one big thing we did was we implemented a new municipal connect, which is the system that our municipal partners use to gather Empac data. We also use About My Property, which is a system that's been around for quite some time, but that system is there for property owners. So if they've got questions about their property and they want to know what data we've got or if they want to file a request for reconsideration, all of that information is available to them on About My Property. And the request for reconsideration process. So if a property owner were to have questions about their property assessment and they think that something is not correct, the steps that they would follow to have that reviewed by Empac would be to submit an R F R form. So that could be done through About My Property. We review that request for reconsideration. We make our decision and mail a letter with results. If they agree with that, that's fine, they don't have to do anything. If they disagree, they have the option to file an, an, an appeal with the assessment review board. Locally, looking at request for reconsideration figures, you can see that they've significantly declined. Now, that first year there, that twenty seventeen year, we always expect that to be a very large number because that's the first year after the assessment update. And as you can see, it declines and we've got eight in twenty twenty-one and only four of those are outstanding right now. And getting into assessment appeals, so we've got twelve open appeals right now at the municipalities. So these are ones where property owners didn't agree with the results if it was a residential request for reconsideration or if it was commercial, they could have gone right to the assessment review board. But of those twelve appeals, that's only a representation of four properties. So they could have filed multiple appeals for a different taxation year. And to close out, even though our offices are closed right now, we are active in the communities. And like I said at the start, I am from the Brockville area. So our people who work and pick up the assessment in the Edwardsburg Cardinal area are from our area. So we know what's going on, we know what stage of the lockdown we are in and we're here to support our communities across Ontario. So I encourage you to read the full municipal partnership report, read our municipal e-newsletter in touch and join our municipal webinars if you have the availability. We do different topics each month and you can see the old recordings on our YouTube channel if you have any interest in reviewing any of those. And that is it for me.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to start by asking a couple of questions and then I'll just go around the table and other councillors will have questions.
Sure thing.
I'd like to look at that last slide, appeals. And I'd like to know, are ones that are open appeals, I'd like to know, open as of what they?
So there are four properties. So they all would have filed their appeals in twenty twenty and they all have commencement dates that are coming up. So there is one property that is, so we've got two of those four properties that are commencing March fifteenth, so just next week their appeal will start. And then the four, the other property starts on May the third.
What do you mean starts?
So the way that the new assessment review board's schedule goes is each appeal gets designated a commencement date. And through that commencement date, there are different schedules and different timelines that occur throughout the proceedings with the assessment review board. So each appeal gets designated a commencement date and then depending on which stream it falls under with the assessment review board, the commencement date, so if we use as an example, one of these properties is a residential property, so it's in the summary proceeding. So it starts in May and it will be completed within fourteen weeks because the schedule for summary proceedings is fourteen weeks. The other properties that are under appeal are commercial appeals, so they fall into the general stream, which is a much longer stream because they're much more complex properties. So they commence, so their whole appeal process starts on March fifteenth and then that runs through sixty-six weeks of proceedings with the assessment review board. But that's not to say that it always takes that long. They, they could settle or, you know, information, once information starts to be reviewed, things sometimes move along a little bit quicker, but they have to be completed within that timeframe. So all of your outstanding appeals right now will be completed in twenty twenty-two.
Well, tell us a little bit more about those appeals. Are they commercial properties again?
You have got two commercial properties and two residential properties.
So why wouldn't they? You, you said two of the four commence on March the fifteenth. I don't know, I really don't understand this commencement concept. I mean, they filed those appeals a long time ago. I mean, they filed their request for consideration or whatever it's called. It seems to be a, two different processes there.
Yeah, so for, for commercial properties, they can go directly to the assessment review board. It's residential properties have to file a request for reconsideration with Empac. And then if they disagree with that and, and what our adjustment is to them, then they could go to the assessment review board and say, Empac has reviewed this, I don't agree with it, I want to file an appeal. Commercial industrial properties can go directly to the assessment review board. So that's what these commercial properties have done. And then the way that it works is once they file an appeal with the assessment review board, the assessment review board then has a schedule that they go by and they've been trying to clear out a backlog of appeals for about the last two years. And so these ones have actually been scheduled pretty quickly. They were filed in twenty, actually, that's not very quickly. So one of them was filed in two thousand and eighteen. So it's one of those backlogged appeals, but we're all at the mercy of the assessment review board and we just have to go by the dates that they schedule them for us. And then that notification gets sent out to all parties of the appeal, Empac being one of those parties, to let us know that we've got an appeal that's commencing or essentially starting on March fifteenth.
All right, do others have questions? I'm going to start over with Councillor Dillabaw.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple. On our Township twenty twenty-one new assessment forecast, there's nothing there for farms. Is farms under the commercial industrial?
Just let me pull it up here.
I believe farms should be rolled up into the residential.
It would be residential, yeah. So when we, when we report out, we do break it down. Yeah, it's under the residential. So we could pull down and send to Melanie or Rebecca how much of that is farm and get that specific information out to us. This is one of our reports that comes down that municipalities can download. That's a report that I included in the program. But if you want that broken down to show which portion of that is farm properties, I could certainly get that information to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And one more, like hitting on what the mayor said. Geez, how come so long for the review assessment board, like sixty-six weeks? I mean, we, we've had really bad luck here in the last couple of years. We've had over a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we already spent in tax, like budget, and then we had to credit these people after two years. Like, why is it so long for the commercial part?
That, that's just the, the legislation that the assessment review board goes by. So like I said, Empac is in the same position as you guys, as we just have to abide by those rules that the province has set forward. And the province introduced those rules in two thousand and nineteen of the timelines that each different appeal stage will follow. And that one unfortunately is, is a very lengthy one, but like I said, they don't always take that full sixty-six weeks. And they are trying to clear out those backlog and those old appeals so that municipalities don't have to go back all of these multiple taxation years. But it's, it's just the way that the legislation has been set out, so we have to abide by that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Cameron?
No, I have nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So we'll vote if Deputy Mayor?
No, Steve Coverline, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Councillor Hunter?
I have one main concern, and that's with the Empac. When you're doing the assessment of industrial properties over the years in Edwardsburg and former Edwardsburg, you know, Edwardsburg, we, we had to pay back an awful lot of, of money in taxes that we collected when it went to assessment review board or the tribunal, whatever you want to call it. Now, every time Empac's lost their case of, of their decision on why they valued a certain value on properties, most of the time it's a classification, whether it's been vacant land, land tax that, that land that was being used industrial or, or wrong assessment of the property. How does this keep happening? You're so far off on your classification there that you continuously keep losing these cases?
Tracy, I don't know if you want to take that one from a valuation standpoint?
Yeah, you know, it'd be, it'd be nice to get some specifics, you know, just kind of the properties that you are talking about. I also like to see, you know, just take a look at your total assessment base and the number of appeals that you have had and the loss that you've had. and the number of appeals that you have had and the loss that you've had as well, and maybe take a look at it that way. Because, you know, we can't get values 100% right on all properties. Obviously, that is the intention when we do place values on the property. But that's the reason why we have an Assessment Review Board and a third party to hear those assessment appeals. Is, you know, sometimes there's information that we're not always privy to that comes out through legislation at the Assessment Review Board. And that's when that's when those reviews are done. And sometimes reductions are made to the property. But I, you know, I'd like to hear more about the properties that more specific that you're talking about. And maybe we can get you some more information just about, you know, your total assessment, total loss at the Assessment Review Board and give you some stats on that as well.
One of the main problems is a number of years ago, we lost a lot of money on the board value types and infrastructure and structural buildings and taxed them that bad. And weren't classified. Taxable, I think this has come to your assessment officers, no matter where they are, should be able to recognize the difference between. We don't end up, I know you're trying to get us all the money you can, but it hurts a lot more to get money and have to pay it back.
Yeah.
Maybe lose a little wee bit at the present time.
And that's the unfortunate part about the Assessment Review Board and the scheduling and the delay in the scheduling. Now, something that they are looking at in implementing as well is going from that 66-week schedule down to something closer to 40 weeks. So that will kind of condense that schedule a little bit and help municipalities obviously a little bit more. The goal of that that change in 2019 is that all assessment appeals would be heard within the cycle. So you can see that that goal probably wouldn't have been achieved if we would have had a reassessment this year because there are still some outstanding appeals. But again, like Kim said, you know, we have no jurisdiction on when they get when they get scheduled. So we have to wait for the Assessment Review Board to actually schedule the commencement dates for all of these appeals and react accordingly, unfortunately.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of points that I have an answer for. The residential property owner receives a notice of assessment. And in 2016, they received those notices along a piece of paper you're well familiar with, I'm sure. It outlines what their property is assessed at, and then it has the four-year phase-in values. So I assume that we're going to get a, you're going to issue a 20, another notice of assessment in 2021, which will show that the 2020 base figure remains the same. And you'll have some interim, I don't know how far out you'll go, but you'll have some interim interim values annually there. How do you determine that? Is there some kind of a growth factor you use or?
No, so there won't be notices mailed out this year unless the province tells us that we are going ahead with the reassessment. So the next time we'll be mailing out notices to each property in Ontario is whenever we get the green light to go ahead with that reassessment of all of the properties in Ontario. Right now, the assessments are frozen, so they're at what the destination value would have been from the 2016 reassessment. So when they got that long piece of paper and it showed the taxation years going up to 2020, we're still frozen at that 2020 taxation year right now. So there hasn't been an increase. They're all just frozen at that very last year of the last assessment update. As soon as the government gives us the green light to go ahead with that, we've already been reviewing the data and we've been reviewing the figures of all of the property types in Ontario. So as soon as we get the green light, we can go ahead and do that. And at that point, we'll be generating notices for each property in Ontario. And the increase will be based on essentially what the market is telling us for each different property type, for each different neighborhood, for each different physical difference of each home from the data that we have on our database.
Okay, so that implies to me that if we stay flat at the 2020 destination rate, barring municipal tax increasing one way or the other, decreasing or increasing. And taxpayers' tax will be held kind of relatively constant, you know, in terms of money paid out. When you finally issue a new assessment and you have a destination point, will there be an effort to try to ameliorate the negative impact of huge increases to make up for the fact that we haven't had annual increases through this period?
Yeah, so that is the reason for the phase-in program. So we phase in those increases over four years. So let's say you've got a property that's assessed at $100,000. For the last assessment update, we've changed it and we're now assessing it at $200,000. So over those four years, we would increase in $25,000 increments so that they don't get hit all at once.
Sorry.
I was just going to add to that as well. So you can you can understand now how, you know, we're hoping that a reassessment does soon occur because the longer that gap is, you know, the larger the increase from the one base year to the next. So at this point, we are still assuming that it will be based on a 2009 value because that's what we were going to be returning. But in fact, we've now lost that, sorry?
2019, you said 2009.
Oh, sorry.
It's going back in time.
So what we will be doing this time, because we've already missed that first year of the phase-in, is that value difference will be phased in over the three remaining years as opposed to four years. But again, we have to get that green light for this to happen next year in order for that three-year cycle to get going.
Is the organization in a position today for being able to do assessments?
Yeah. Yeah, so we have been completing assessments of properties where we've received building permits. So adding on assessment value based on new properties that have been built or additions or alterations. But we've also continued to review sales data and to review those market trends based on each different property type so that as soon as the government gives us the green light, we're ready to go. Because we were probably about 50% through our review last year when COVID hit and the government put the brakes on. So we decided as a corporation to just continue our work so that we're in a really great place. Whenever the government tells us that we can go ahead with that reassessment, we don't have to reinvent the wheel and we can just go forward with all of the values that we've already fine tuned and reviewed.
My second, my second point, referring to slide 13. On that chart, start the top line, new house. And the forecasted working range in 2021 is for 21 houses. And the estimated value per working is 262. Is that number a median or is it an average?
It's an average based on what has been put on in previous years from a new house assessment value that we've, so if we've gone out to the municipality and picked up a new house, that's an average from previous assessment years.
Okay, and part of the same issue is as people who have to determine revenue streams when we're doing our budget, how, what is MPAC's sort of recommendation of how to use those numbers, the 4.6 million and the 5.5?
Yeah, so we typically recommend, so like I said, those bottom numbers are more the ones that you're looking at. So we commit that we are going to get that 85% of the forecast range. So that would be your second last column there. That's the 85% of that forecast range. And we do review these numbers quarterly so that we can see if perhaps there are new houses that we hadn't already predicted would be completed this year. We could increase that forecast. Or last year, we had several municipalities that had construction halted completely. So we maybe had 21 houses that we had predicted that we would be able to pick up for assessment. But this one entire subdivision in a municipality has halted entirely. So we've got to then scale that number back. But that gets reported out quarterly so that you can kind of see the back and forth of those numbers. And we do have some municipalities where those numbers won't change because we're staying the course and we're confident in those numbers, and those numbers are reviewed locally. So our manager evaluation and myself meet quarterly to look at these numbers and look at what we have picked up for assessment already and to see what's still available. And that's a really great benefit to us living in the communities that we service because we are well aware of the projects that are going on and the work that's being done.
So you have a lot of faith in the 6.7 million, right?
Yeah, yeah, based on the information that we have and the data that we have that is driving these numbers is the information that gets fed through your municipality in the way of building permits. So this is showing the building permits that we have on our system, and then we've attributed an average value to that.
Yeah, I'm going to get Mr. Robertson in here.
I'm curious, what impact the, is the sale of houses right now, there's really a bidding war going on with, you know, and has that got any impact on the next five or four-year assessment projection?
I can see that.
The price of houses is just going crazy. Sale, sale values are literally a bidding war.
Yeah.
I'm looking for a house right now, so you're preaching to the choir.
Yeah, and so something to keep in mind that if things proceed the way they were planned and we go to a 2009 current value assessment.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
2019, Tracy.
Say nine again?
No, stop, 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 stop. I do not understand why you're giving us misleading information here.
2009.
We are presently at a January 1, 2016 base year.
Yes.
If things had proceeded, we would be at a January 1, 2020 base year.
2019.
Base year goes up by four years.
Except this this previous reassessment that was going to be actually, it was it was decided that it would actually be on a three-year cycle. So it was actually 2009 values for 20 valuation, for 2020 valuation. So and what's that extra year, what that extra year allowed us to do? So typically, it would be 2016, then we would go to 2020. And we would return those values in 2019, basically when we're doing our analysis. So we went to the government to say, we're not really getting a true indication of the market. If we have to use a 2020 and return those values in 2019, we're not getting any of that market data from 2020.
2019, 2019 is over and done.
Yep.
And we bought our assessments for 2019.
That's for.
The third year of the phase-in of the 2016 base year.
That was still based.
January 1, 2016 base year was phased in over four years, 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020.
Correct.
Then one should have gone to a new base year on January 20, on January 1, 2020 to cover taxation years 21, 22, 23, and 24.
Correct.
Okay, so I do not understand what you're telling us here.
So, but from 2021 to 2024, it would have been based on a 2009 current value assessment.
2009?
Did I say 2009 again? 2019. 2019 current value assessment. So that's that's something to keep in mind when, you know, you're looking at the market now. And that's one downfall of having a four-year cycle, right? Because you're not really keeping up with the market in a market that's, you know, really increasing every year. But what it does do is it kind of mediates those highs and lows when you go to a four-year cycle. Where we're.
The cycles we're familiar with. We've been working with them since about 2012, 2010, 2008, 2008.
Yeah.
The point is, none of us at this point know what the new base year is going to be.
No, we don't. And we don't know at this point either. We can just, we know what was going to be used last year. It was a 20,019 CVA for 2021 taxation. So if things stay the same, then it'll be a 2019 CVA. Does the government come back and say, no, because of COVID, because of the time, we're going to go to a 2020 CVA? We really don't know at this point what the government is going to legislate us to do.
Okay, all right. Well, there's no use beating a dead horse here. I mean, I'm surprised that the, at the slide 13 because slide 13 is basically a forecast of what we're going to see in our roles in our in our assessment roles that we get at the end of this year. It's a forecast of what we'll see for assessment next year. We're still working on 2020 and in 2021. Okay. Does the government give you any kind of an indication at all as to when they might decide?
No.
No, we kind of thought, we assumed it might be before the budget delivered at the end of March. We're in weekly conversations with them. They're asking us basically for kind of analytics, you know, where do we see the values going? They've got so much pressure going both ways. We've seen resolutions from municipalities asking for a reassessment. And we've seen resolutions from municipalities asking us not to do a reassessment. So I mean, we really have no indication as to which way the government's going to go on this. But we're hoping very soon.
Okay, but in order to change the base year, it's, you're not going to go physically and reassess all properties. It's basically going to be a computer program exercise, is it not?
That's right. Yeah, based on sales, based on analytics and sales that are collected in the in the market.
Yeah. So I don't know, Mr. Robertson, I think that's the point you're trying to add.
I think I got the answer there, that the sales do.
Yeah. The sales come back into the, they come back into the About My Property. In other words, a sale, if I go to About My Property, guys, I'll see the comparables. If one of those comparable sold, it'll show on About My Property, will it not?
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah.
We receive a nightly update of the sales data from the Land Registry System.
Okay, all right, yeah. Any other questions of these ladies and gentlemen? Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. I mean, I guess we're all in the same position. We're worried about this next base year, when it's going to be and how much the phase-in period is going to be.
Yeah, and as soon as we hear something, we will be sharing that information with municipalities. And we'll also be offering to come back out and present to council once we've got something to present and some information to share.
Well, the key is, will it affect the 2021, 2022 taxation year? That's the big thing.
Yeah.
This, okay, all right. Well, thanks very much again for the presentation. It's gone a little over 50 minutes. So appreciate, we always appreciate the chance to get to know what MPAC's doing. So thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, so now I guess we're going to the next presentation. And that's going to be the Treasurer's Report on our Budget Process. So Melanie, I guess you're up here.
She's not getting past 2009.
Yeah, didn't she? She had trouble.
This, this whole process just very is fraught with huge problems.
Oh.
Have you looked at the building costs? I mean, building costs have like tripled.
Yep. I don't get that average of 262.
And so what is that, what impact is that going to have on terms of valuation?
Well, I think that's.
You don't go on too many holidays before your 2020.
Well, there's no use us sitting here and gable gazing that because it'll come when it comes and comes, that's it.
If it's based on 2019 prices or 2020 prices, it still won't have hit. It depends on where the 2020 prices are too.
No, but they get, she says they get nightly updates from the Land Registry Offices, so their database is shifting continuously.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I don't understand her talking about 2019 values. I mean, the base year has always moved by four. I can't imagine Robert's.
No, it should be 2020.
Exactly, January 1, 2020.
She was saying that it was going to be based off the three. They're going to throw the 2020 one out.
Well.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
That's what I understood.
With the computers.
But if they do that though, isn't that?
Yeah, it's a disaster, right? Well, anyway, don't even worry about it because we can't control it.
No, but it has an interesting, there's a, an interesting relationship between what they give us and then this tax rate that we put into this budget.
Well, twenty twenty one is cast in stone.
No, I understand that, yeah, I'm thinking twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Right, assessment creep versus taxation.
Yeah, like what they're gonna come out with is a new number for assessment and we could end up having a tax increase but really decreasing the rate.
Uh, yep. More, generating more dollars with less rate.
Yeah.
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 You could.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's trying.
And you definitely know because we're out in the spot year, they go on, on the separate rates, gonna jump huge like twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, so.
Yeah.
Twenty five, thirty percent. Okay, it might.
Yeah, but remember, your twenty sixteen base year, you, you just arrived at that number at twenty twenty.
Right, that's right, that's what I was getting.
Yeah, you just arrived at that number at twenty twenty.
Cause you won't get to twenty twenty till twenty twenty four.
Exactly, yeah.
That's what I heard.
So I thought I'd put together a little bit of a presentation for council just to kind of uh give you a base of where we've come in our twenty twenty one process, uh budget process. Initially, I, I presented to committee on November ninth, an overview of our, of the budget, twenty twenty one budget impactors. The main impact to the twenty twenty one budget, as most of you know, is the decrease in our Ontario municipal partnership funding of ninety three thousand two hundred dollars, this equates to about a one point five eight percent tax levy increase. Budget one, we did a review of uh capital, draft capital. Uh, at that particular budget, I mean, we didn't make, our committee made some changes to the capital itself. Um, or the budget itself, cap, uh budget two, we looked at both capital and operating together. Um, the initial draft budget had a funding deficit of over four hundred thousand dollars that equated to about a seven percent uh tax levy increase. The tax supported capital amount was just over a million dollars, uh which was slightly higher than twenty twenty. In twenty twenty, we had about nine hundred seventy eight thousand uh supported uh capital through taxation money. Budget number three, we looked at several operational budgets. Uh, there were no changes to council or the policing, conservation, cemetery planning directive. There was a reduction to the transfer to the administration capital reserve of forty thousand, as recommended by committee. Uh, and the draft budget uh deficit changed to three seventy one, that changed to, to a six point three two percent levy increase. Uh, budget number four, uh we also looked at some more of review, more of the departments, agriculture drainage, public works, waste collection, transfer site, storm, sewer, uh committee recommended increasing the bag sale revenue by ten thousand dollars and decreased the budget for the transfer station capital project by twenty five. Uh, committee recommended uh pre-budget approval of hundred fifty thousand dollars to start uh engineering and drainage work in Spencerville. Uh, so staff did make some minor changes to operational budgets, which changed the draft budget deficit to three sixteen. This equated to, to a five thirty five, five point three five levy increase. Budget number five, we looked at, we mainly looked at draft, the draft library, fire department protective services, bylaw building and rec budgets, um staff provided, committed a couple of options for committee to consider reducing the budget deficit down to one fifty three or two point six. These changes resulted in a decrease of taxation funding for capital of about two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, but we did, the committee did increase the transfer store reserves, um capital reserves to about a hundred and ten, about sixty thousand, sixty thousand for raise and fifty thousand for storm. Committee recommended uh purchasing the fire truck outright instead of financing. So the, the result of that, um and there's two parts, with the forty thousand dollar truck, um we have some money from the sale of a couple of trucks which will net us about twenty thousand dollars. So we had ten in the operational and moved forty to capital, but we're offsetting um the purchase of twenty thousand dollars worth of revenue. So that's uh the net change, the overall amount is about ten thousand dollars. Um, at that particular meeting, committee had recommended transferring ninety three thousand five hundred out of the cardinal hydro reserve to fund the purchase of the Zamboni and the, and the balance of the replacement of the carbon pool filter. This transfer reduces the, the cardinal reserve, hydro reserve from down to thirty six thousand two hundred. Um, staff recommends only transferring forty three five on the balance of the pool filter only. Um, the main reason for the recommendation is that um there's two things, if you're taking that much money out of the reserve fund, it's no longer there when we need it again. Um, by taking this amount of money out, you're reducing the overall taxation supported capital quite significantly. And, and, and is it just, it was just to reduce the tax rate to, to, to one, one point zero six? You know, then we're, we're not supporting uh capital to the level that we've done in, in periods before. Um, if we did the fifty thousand out of, if it didn't transfer the fifty thousand, that would increase it um, the current budget that you have in front of you is sixty, sixty two thousand eight sixty nine. Uh, that would increase the deficit to one twelve, which increased to one point nine one. I did a little analysis of where we've done uh to show taxation supported capital over the last five years and you can see the top row is basically the, the net before any type, any fine funding happens. And uh we stayed relatively good between, between two and, and uh around two million each time. The last two budgets, we've been down to one point seven. Our amortization, uh current amortization expense is about one point eight million and it's typically a good idea to try to maintain uh replenishment of capital of the same amount of amortization at least because amortization, the historical costs and not current um replacement costs. Um, you can see with the transfers from reserves that we are taking less from reserves and actually if you hop down to two or three uh column, or rows below where we have the transfers to reserves, we're actually kind of, we flipped the switch and in our current budgets, we're putting more money in than we're taking out. And that's just prudent uh financial planning for the future. Um, we, we need to definitely use these reserves, um staff's not reckon, not saying we shouldn't take money out of reserves when it's appropriate but in the same respect, we have to be conscious of the fact that the combination of the transfers into reserves and the replacement of capital supported by taxation, we need to probably try to save more level. Uh, if we don't keep a level of that, we're gonna start impacting future years in terms of how much we can do with capital. So we don't raise enough tax money to put either into reserves or do replacement of capital at some point. This is just trying to give the committee a overview on. So, as we said, in twenty nineteen, we did have, actually in that's previous slide, you can see uh did put an additional row in there, additional revenue based on that phase in row. Twenty nineteen was an exceptional year, we had over six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars in additional revenue for taxation revenue purposes. Uh, unfortunately, that, as we just heard from impact, you know, the appeals process took a lot of that money away from us unfortunately. So a combination of three huge commercial industrial fields um has, has resulted in a hundred eighty three thousand in rep, in refunds just from the township, I mean, what the counties and the school boards on top of that, it was a fairly significant refund. The twenty twenty refund was funded, uh thankfully, there was a Monday's outside for a seven thirty truck stop uh fire plane, which we didn't have to use, we were successful in getting that claim paid out. So we were able to use that hundred thousand to pay the twenty twenty uh appeal uh refund. In twenty one, we are refunding um seventy two thousand seven fifty seven and as committee appealed direction, that will be coming in with the reserve. Um, the tax rate of reserve, that puts that reserve down fifty seven thousand. Um, the reserve policy as of states now, um the low result, reserves, lower limit of this particular reserve should be at a hundred thousand. Uh, the twenty, original draft twenty twenty one budget did not have a transfer into the tax rate of reserve. Uh, we're recommending that that's probably something we need to institute um because we need to try to get that again, uh just in preparation for potential trials if the impact is not uh, it's successful in giving its good values from, from go forward. So if we, if committee is looking at these two recommendations, um that would increase uh the budget deficit to one thirty two to eight sixty nine, which is two hundred and forty percent. I just, this slide was given to committee uh in the November meet and the November budget presentation just shows you where that additional, that additional money that is coming at a twenty twenty tax rate. And I think in the previous slide, you could see six, sixty seven hundred dollars of allowance we have uh incurred in the same tax rate. Um, that's, that's certainly not giving them. And the only other, the other side I've got here is an analysis of the total tax rate. You know, I, I had this in the same, uh, the same slide in the November presentation. And uh, you know, the overall total tax rate is more one point two since twenty thirteen. So that's slightly a misnomer where they say taxes keep going up. Well, the tax rate maybe doesn't keep going up, but uh it's been phasing on assessment value of property. I would think most, most, most property owners would hope that their values of their home have appreciated and not. So they expect to see that tax rate get higher. So facing uh, I just showed you the top part, there's the, the twenty twenty number, but uh I'm just basing, there's, there's no change to the potential for education rates in residential. Although the uh province has signaled they're, they're reducing the commercial industrial education rates from uh one point two five to, to point eight eight across the board. That's a thirty percent decrease for those uh, those tax classes. Uh, right now, I've reached out to the treasurer of the counties, um I don't know what their, the change in the rate, um potential rate for change from twenty one is in there. Initially, the draft budget increased um at a one point four five increase. Uh, so because I don't know that, I'm basing my um calculation of impact to, uh, to an increase to a property based on just the two point two five municipal tax rate and not changing anything. Uh, this isn't uh including anything going to the counties or anything to the province. So as you can see, the, the value of properties and the various um annual increase based on that two point two five. Uh, and on a hundred thousand, it's fourteen seven annual year. That's double three. Take any questions if anybody's got any questions on.
Well, questions can start at the other end of the table. Mr. Robertson.
I think it's a pretty good presentation, basically what we're, you're saying, saying in this budget, I'm clear. On account of losing the ninety three thousand dollars, one point five eight percent, basically, our tax change increased loss, the government hadn't taken basically a hundred thousand dollars away from us, our tax change increased by twenty eight percent.
You get our very promise shift. Wow, between OMPF loss and uh, and the seventy two thousand or whatever for our impact here.
Okay, so I think um as we, well, first of all, we'll go and see if there's any additional questions for the treasurer because I think this item comes up again uh at seven C. So we'll deal with the issues arising when we get to seven C. So just for clarification at this stage. Uh, any, any, no, no, no. Okay, so we'll deal with them when we get to seven C. But just before we go on, just, I'll give you one last chance and that is to just go back to, to uh page forty of sixty three. And on the bottom, last paragraph on the bottom of page forty of sixty three, if committee agrees with the staff recommendations, the budget deficit would be one thirty two, which would equate to a two point two five percent tax levy increase, is that correct? And then now the staff recommendations that you're talking about are, I think I caught them, there's two. One is uh, recommendation transferring, uh recommends transferring. It's, it's got, the committee recommended, oh, forget the fire truck, wasn't there? It was the next one on page thirty eight. Recommend transferring, the committee recommended transferring ninety three five out of the hydro reserve fund to purchase, to fund the purchase of the Zamboni and the replacement of the pool filter. Staff recommends only transferring the amount of forty three five to fund the balance of the pool filter and not transferring the remainder, right? That's the first recommendation. What's the second one?
Transferring twenty thousand into the tax rate off. Uh, the twenty, the original draft twenty twenty one budget did not have a transfer into the tax rate off. And due to the, um, the two big large refunds, that balance in that term has dropped significantly. And based on the policy, we should have committed a hundred thousand in that, that reserve.
And that's on page forty, so that's recommendation number two.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll just leave it there for now and then come back to that when we get to seven C. All right, so I'm moving on then. Uh, we have no discussion items listed. We're at number seven on the agenda, which is action information items. And the first one is our statement of remuneration and expenses. And uh that, um, that statement of remuneration and expenses was circulated, are there any questions with that? Just point out that we're the cheapest, we're the cheapest and best value you've got going and we hardly ever complain. So if there are no questions, I'm really done. Well, isn't it true?
That's very true.
I don't know, but plain. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to seven B before I get in more trouble. Uh, that's the CSI web interface purchase. And there's a briefing note with that one and you can see the reasons for the recommended interface purchase. And there is a recommendation that council authorized the purchase of CFO CSI web interface from PSD and funding the purchase of fourteen thousand two hundred and the first year of annual support of one thousand five hundred with modernization funds. So are there any questions with this briefing note? If there's no question, the one briefing note.
Through the mayors this year, well, uh, this one will allow, the way that our region will allow uh some, like a, a resident to, um, you know, uh, say a pothole needs to be fixed, is that?
Through, through the chair, that, that is correct.
Will, uh, through, through the mayor's, the CEO, will this give uh council access through a dashboard where we will be able to see what the complaints are and, and where they're at?
Uh, we, we, we are working to try to get sort of the, the, you brought some dashboard or not for, for.
That wasn't a positive answer.
Through, through the chair, it wasn't a negative one either. Yeah, it's uh worth a try. It, it is, it is a work in progress and I think that it can, uh, on the sounds of it, it can be achieved, it's just. By find, finding that balance.
I'll follow up.
Yeah.
Uh, yes. If fifty nine dollar annual maintenance support fee, does that include update? Regular, like when they make changes to the system to get the.
Yeah, through the chair, the uh public sector digest is continually increasing or enhancing the programming. So that's basically a lot of dollars we go for. So that's basically a lot of dollars we go for. Okay.
Yes, I just want to go back to the few mayors', uh, uh, statement, uh, with complaint process coming in. Um, and, and, and you know, if, if, if one pothole comes in a month, that's, that, that's fine. But if we get five hundred complaints from the public, how's our staff going to handle this? Is, is this, is, is that going to be compatible with this, uh, programs, program that we'll be looking after here and getting?
So, so through the chair, uh, part, part of this interface is also, uh, what, what we are hopeful to achieve is that, for instance, if a pothole, uh, complaint is received, that something will, will automatically be generated and, and receive that. What the, the typical timeline for completion of this work is, you know, X days. Right, because, because a pothole complaint has been received through the, uh, through the minimum maintenance standard, there's a, there's a timeline in order to be able to correct that. So I think it, it, it helps with, uh, with that expectation that the resident realizes that it's not going to be necessarily fixed tomorrow. But they'll, uh, at, at different intervals, they'll be able to, uh, see that it's either in progress. And a pothole is probably a bad example, if they've complained, they'll know that it's fixed when, when it's fixed. But you'll, you'll get a, a sort of a status of, of, uh, complete. So I think in a number of cases, it, uh, it, it helps the residents, uh, and, and, and staff in, interact with, uh, with updates and status. Progress, just follow up.
So, so what I'm reading there, when complaints do start coming in, they'll be more quickly charmed to the proper department.
Uh, through, through, yes, so if, or, or instance, let's, let's continue on that pothole fee. It's, it would be directed, that complaint would be automatically directed to, uh, to, to public works. So they, they would be aware of it. Versus right now, in, in certain cases, the resident phones in, right, we're entering all that stuff into, in, in the city, we aren't generating that over, over, over the public works, so it, it's a more direct approach.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good, no, thank you. Okay, so in that case, the chair is looking for, uh, mover and a seconder to action the recommendation that I see at the bottom of page four and six, Councilor Dillabaw, are you moving? Are you moving?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Dillabaw is moving, Councilor Cameron is here, how's, Councilor Cameron is seconding. I'm going to call a question on the recommendation, goes in favor, motion is carried. All right, so now I'm moving on to, uh, seven B, which now gets us to the budget. And, uh, and, uh, so then I'm on page fifty-six of sixty-three. The purpose of the briefing note is to obtain direction from committee on finalizing the twenty twenty-one budget. So we had the five meetings, uh, and, uh, you can see the review there under the background. The following budget lines directly contribute to the tax levy increase. The treasurer, uh, has reviewed those with us. Uh, and, uh, also, we, we were asked at one point, what we thought would be acceptable tax rate increases for twenty twenty-one. Uh, they were captured, listed there. And so now I'm looking at the financial considerations paragraph on the top, out of the middle of page fifty-seven. Now, the first one is the committee should reconsider their decision to transfer ninety-three five out of the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund and transfer only forty-three five in order to fund the balance of the Cardinal Pool Filter Replacement. All right, I'd like to entertain some discussion on that. And if, uh, the discussion goes the right way, I'd like to have someone make a motion to action that recommendation. So discussion first, looking for a motion, discussion. Discussion, okay, if there's no discussion, I'd like somebody to make a move that we motion that we act.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have, uh, one, like, we're, we're, if, if we reduce it, we're down to one point eight or one point six. If we take the fifty thousand, is that right? Of our last, pardon?
One point nine.
Was it one point nine, one point eight? Well, okay, one point eight. So we're saying we want two and a half to three, so why, why not take that fifty thousand and, and maybe pay more roads, uh, maybe some with the twenty twenty-two, bring them ahead in twenty twenty-one. If we're down to one point eight. That's a suggestion.
No, I think, uh, anyway, let's the treasurer answer.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I follow the train thought necessarily, uh, because I'm not sure at this point staff prepared to figure out what fifty thousand dollars we can put to a road. Uh, we've gone, gone through the capital, there's a road that we, the only road we took out, I believe, is Cedar Grove. And I'm, oh, I believe that was the only, of the original draft, that was the only road that we took out. Um, we did have David Street and, and Charles Street in, but then we decided, uh, based on the, the scope of these drainage projects, the paving would not occur in twenty twenty-one. So we deferred the paving of David and, and Charles. Um, so I'm, I'm not really sure yet, will be, be adding to the project.
Well, whatever, just give me an example of, of, of bringing something ahead of twenty twenty-two, gotta be done, that's all. Of using that fifty thousand, getting it down to one point eight, but to bring it up to two and a half, that's all, actually.
Counselor. Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the, the treasurer, I, I, I think is, is, is totally correct here. If, if we take the ninety-three thousand out, which would include fifty thousand, we're going to, we're going to reduce that reserve to a critical, critical, uh, uh, number. And, and first of all, the, the reserve was never meant for that. It was never meant to reduce taxes, period. And we have slipped things and, and, and slid, uh, for, for a few, for a few of the things. I'm willing, I'm willing to go with the, the forty-three, uh, out and, uh, and that'll, that'll, that'll guiding the other recommendation wise, we're going to have two point two five, which that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's, that's my number.
Well, we have, we have two, we have two, uh, yeah, because we, we reviewed that right at the end, uh, which was on page forty of sixty-three, wasn't it? Yeah. Okay, so that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to action these two staff recommendation here. Chair's looking for support, chair's looking for motion to, to action the first of the two recommendations. Councilor Cameron moving, and this is the, the first one is then to transfer only forty-three five from the Cardinal Reserve Fund to fund the balance of the Cardinal Pool Filter, that's the intent of this recommendation.
That, that is correct.
Do you have a seconder, does Councilor Cameron have a seconder? He does, I don't see one. Where are we going to find a seconder here? Looking for a seconder. Legitimate reasons for leaving that money in that fund. Oh, second. Thank you very much, Mr. Bradley. And there are legitimate reasons for not funding a capital of that one. Uh, there was a point that the treasurer was trying to get at. Okay.
So before you call above, can we, can we review what exactly those legitimate reasons are then?
Okay, so, so what we're focusing on is the, is the legitimate reason not to use fifty thousand from that fund to fund a capital, a program. Because i- i- if you use fifty thousand from that fund to fund that Zamboni, it's, the Zamboni is being funded from basically a one-time reserve fund, not from taxation. And the treasurer is saying, we're not funding enough of our capital from taxation, at least I think that's your argument.
That is my, that is my, 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 yeah, the amount of taxes for capital is the lowest we've had in five years.
Right.
And that's a little concerning because at some point, we know there's going to be big projects. We have another Zamboni that, for instance, that's going to have to be replaced, we know that. Uh, we know, we have fire trucks that have to be replaced, you know, we have those, we have a long list of capital that.
So we shouldn't be making it easier for ourselves each year.
You, you should try to keep a consistent taxation, we've seen this, uh, where we pull money out of reserves to drop our tax rate. And then five years down the road, or even less than that, we have to tax again because we, we haven't maintained a nice, a nice level amount of taxation for the capital. You can't, you only, that, that reserve money only is there. It, it's only going to be replenished unless you tax to get it replenished. So there's not.
This particular one it can't.
Well, that one can't be, but I mean, any of our reserves, you have to tax for them to build them back up to use them again. So as long as you can keep a consistent level of contribution to both projects, as well as trans, transport reserves, then you're not going to have those dips and dives and have to go asking for more money at a later.
Councilor Dillabaw wanted it, and Deputy Mayor.
I didn't. I just want to know what that Cardinal it is for, can someone help me? What can we use?
Why do you have to use it?
You have to use it for anything, so we can leave it there?
You've got to remember that the, the purpose of that fund, again, I come back to basics. Cardinal owned an asset. And the asset was the, the hydroelectric system. And they sold that asset to Rita St. Lawrence. And the money that they got from Rita St. Lawrence went into that fund. Now, remember as well that the Cardinal also loaned two hundred to twenty-five thousand or two hundred fifty thousand dollars to Rita St. Lawrence. They loaned that money. So in return for the sale of their asset, they got two chunks of money. One, they loaned back, and the other, they put in that fund for the benefit of Cardinal residents. Now, into that reserve fund goes the annual dividend from Rita St. Lawrence. Plus, I believe, the interest on the loan, right? Right, so up until this year, twenty-nine, no, twenty-twenty was the first year that there was no dividend received, but there was interest paid. And we still have, we haven't called the loan yet. Remember that we have the ability at any point in time to call that loan. There's, that loan is, is callable and on notice, really. So that's what that fund was for. And I mean, I know that we, you know, we moved a long way along the chain since the sale of that asset by the village of Cardinal, but there's still a, there's still a continuation of, of fiduciary responsibility. Okay, so that was that, now this week, and then this.
So, um, more of a general comment, but to, to the treasurer, I guess, then, an example of a better use of that. Um, instead of a, a Zamboni for township would be the Highway Two project. And, and saying that, that, that money had a purpose. That, that because it was generated from a utility, that it should go back towards a utility that is only accessible to the residents of Cardinal. You know, than that, there isn't really much of a use that doesn't benefit the entire township.
Well, it's not meant to benefit the entire township.
But that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm pointing out.
Yeah.
I understand that.
And, and, and yes, I, I, I totally understand your, your, your thought there. Um, yes, um, yes, you're, you're, you're absolutely right. I would much more prefer to see the money used in another way than to offset taxation. I would like it used as maybe new, um, maybe new lighting or something like this in, in, in the village of Cardinal, uh, uh, not necessarily street lights, but lighting displays such as Christmas, Christmas season's greens and, and lighting like that, uh, uh, where, because the money is only supposed to be used within Village of Cardinal. It's, it was never meant to be used outside the Village of Cardinal.
But going back to Deputy Mayor's point, it was a sale of a utility. Money would go back to the utility if we put it into this groundwater.
Which, I mean, and I ultimately, I was asking the treasurer, but, but I mean, good for discussion, but, but just as an example of a use for it, that, that would, it would define it only for the residents of Cardinal. Because, I mean, I struggled with why we, I know that, I think the C A O had brought it forward before, and I didn't support getting rid of the, the, uh, this reserve fund altogether, but it, I mean, at this point, it almost makes sense, especially as we try to unite, create a united, uh, township, if we keep having Cardinal-centric, or Spencerville-centric, or Johnstown-centric, uh, reserve funds. Uh, it certainly doesn't go towards, uh, you know, one united township, so.
Well, yes, and, and, and Deputy Mayor, you could, I, I can see your point, but this was all done prior to when Cardinal was standing on. It was not, it was not an amalgamation of township at that point in time. It was very close to.
Oh, I see, the sale took place prior to amalgamation.
Right, okay.
So it was the village of Cardinal losing something, the village of Cardinal giving something back, that's what it was.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll get to go back, I want to get moving on here.
The only comment I, that I tend to agree with, uh, Councilor Cameron. This fund is not taxed for, it comes as a dividend from Rita St. Lawrence. This year, none, there may be years in the future when there is none. And so it has a limited input or revenue stream, or can be a limited input revenue stream. Not under our, under our control, directly.
Not much.
And, uh, the, the purpose as stated was for Cardinal, so I think it's conflating taxpayer raised money with money that comes from other sources. So I'd like to leave it, take, take the fifty out.
Okay, I want to go to Mr. Grant just for a second, because I didn't, for the first year in many, many years, I didn't make the Rita St. Lawrence Annual General Meeting. And, uh, and that was the meeting for the year that ended in December of twenty nineteen. And I can't remember whether or not Rita St. Lawrence declared the dividend, but didn't pay it. Because that was my discussion with Mr. Gibson, who was our representative. I think they declared the dividend, but they didn't pay the dividend because they wanted to, they wanted to maintain and hold their cash. So were you at the meeting? I think we were.
Uh, through, through the chair, I wa, I was at the meeting, and, uh, that is correct, they, they are old. They, they, they declared, but they are holding it, uh, for cash flow purposes.
Yes, so there will be a, a twenty nineteen dividend coming into this fund. It's just that they're holding it for cash flow purposes. Which is quite common.
Yeah. So can I just ask, just for my own clarification, what exactly is, is the purpose of the reserve?
Well, I mean, I think it's been discussed.
It was, the fire reserve is to go to, to offset costs with, with the fire department and to replace fire trucks and to toward, towards, and your fire station or whatever, but what exactly is the reserve fund set up for at this point? I mean, I know what it was, uh, before amalgamation, but what's its purpose today?
Did the purpose change?
It's not changed.
There's no change. In the purpose.
Yours and the village of Cardinal.
Well, that's true, but the, but the residents are still there.
Township residents are still here too.
Yeah.
With, they, they dividend up township, industrial park, the township on, on, the benefit goes to the.
You know, the point is, the point is, if, if we did accumulate a hundred thousand in that fund, it would be a big movement towards funding the sewer and water project on County Road Two.
We are right there, my motion last year was, get rid of this reserve and split it into water and sewer.
We're not there yet, so. We could transfer it into the water and sewer reserves. But then we would have to make an understanding, because nothing changes. Just because we take this and collapse this fund, nothing changes about the fact that the dividend and the interest on the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar loan is still morally owed to the village of Cardinal. Morally owed to the village of Cardinal.
And water and sewer.
Yeah, maybe we should call the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar loan. You know, and put it into the sewer and water reserve.
I, 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 yeah, I think, like, for me, that's a, a good, a good idea at this point, the more I understand the vote, the more I support that idea.
Well, you can only do it once, once it's done, it's done.
Was it spent, spent?
Once, you can only spend a dollar once.
Otherwise, though, it's, it's, it hard, in my mind, it's hard to find a, a Cardinal-only, a Cardinal, Cardinal-centric thing for it, otherwise every, even, like, I mean, you could argue against the pool if you want.
You could argue against motherhood.
Well, just, just to quickly answer. Just, just to quickly answer the, the mayor's question, when the water meters went into the village of Cardinal, to the citizens of the village of Cardinal. It shouldn't have been done, but it was. That's where the money came from. Out of that. So just think today, if that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars didn't come out of that to cover the water needs. You know, so, and, and there was another way to do the one, but anyway.
That's, that's, that argument is behind us. Okay, I'm gonna wind up this conversation. I've got a motion on the floor. Motion has been duly moved and seconded. I'm gonna follow the question on the motion. And the intent of the motion is that we will transfer only forty-three, five hundred out of the Cardinal Reserve, Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund to fund the balance of the Cardinal Pool Field. That's the intent of the motion. So, you know, those in favor of the motion, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I guess the councilor honor, you're opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's six. Six in favor and one of stints. All right, that's, that's one issue solved. Now, the next issue is the next issue is outlined in the third last paragraph. As a result of two recent refunds that were funded from the tax write-off reserve. The balance in this reserve is now fifty-seven, two forty-two. Committee could consider, and this is what we're gonna talk about. Transferring twenty thousand dollars into the tax write-off reserve as per the reserve policy. You remember all the meetings we went through to set that policy? Now, if we make that change. The budget deficit will be a hundred and thirty-two, eight sixty-nine, which equates to a two-point-two-five tax levy increase. So now I'm just focusing on that narrow issue. Discussion please, looking for a mover and a seconder eventually. Counselor Hunter.
Well, I like the idea of putting money in, but I don't like the idea of putting twenty thousand in that. And we're saying a two-point-two-five percent with the way we kept with these tax rate offs. I changed, see, it raises that to two and a half percent, but forty thousand dollars over to that, sure.
Uh, two and a half percent.
Put forty back in twenty, well, wouldn't you? Be pretty close to an half, two-point-four.
We need fifteen to get us to a half. Need fifteen to get you to a half.
Fifteen? So twenty plus fifteen? So twenty, in other words, thirty-five?
Yeah, yeah, the number fifteen thousand roughly to the, uh,
Would that be good?
It's, it start, you're gonna get close to your hundred thousand, which is your base, base.
We keep getting hit with these things just year after year, but yeah. Hurts a hell of a lot more if we have to go, go looking at what, where are we gonna find it? Last time we were lucky, the, the previous council, we found a seven thirty. They got a hundred thousand dollars set aside, set aside in the bad, bad debt where, if we hadn't had that there. If that hadn't been, just been paid out, that money wouldn't have been spent. We would have been looking for a hundred thousand dollars someplace. Where, where to find, we're gonna have a big deficit.
Okay, so Counselor Hunter, if you're interested in, uh, in moving forward with your um, the way you're talking, you could move a motion that committee cons- recommend transferring thirty-five thousand into the tax write-off reserve as per the reserve policy. You could put that forward as a motion. I have no motion on the floor at the present time. That would be a clean new motion on the floor. The implication of that motion is that we would have a two-point-five tax levy increase.
I'll make the motion after a given, but I have some chance to discuss it.
Okay, fair enough. Do you see the way he's going? Deputy Mayor.
So, um, uh, through the mayor to the treasurer. Last year's surplus, one hundred and thirty-two. Um, by my understanding, goes to reserves, uh, this year, correct?
Uh, through the tax policy, um, the tax rate by law policy. Any surpluses or deficits is, is taken down based on, two reserves are taken from reserves based on that on percentage of the ten-year capital typically, so. You know, the admin, storm, public works that can fire.
So, so with, with last year's surplus, we're already putting two pers- two-point-two-five percent surplus into uh, reserves now that we wouldn't have had. Um, uh, if we wouldn't have had a surplus last year, correct? Like more than what we were.
It'll, yeah, it'll increase what we, more than what we had initially budgeted.
So can we direct where that surplus goes?
Certainly, the policy, we would put a recommendation forward and actually, uh, after conversations with the CIO. Uh, and I believe any meeting committee has discussed this, we have a bit of a surplus um, in savings on our, on the winter control. And back in twenty nineteen, we had pulled seventy thousand out of that reserve. One of the recommendations that we would probably do is that some of that surplus can put back in so that our winter control reserve was brought back up to a level. Uh, in, in future, we don't know what winter will, will, you know, deal with, where we've got, had a good winter again, maybe. You know, the spring, this spring, winter's been pretty good for, for, but you never know.
Would, would it be reasonable then to say the thirty-five could come over that one thirty-two?
It, it certainly could, yes. Uh, the only thing I would caution is that, um, you know, you're we've always budgeted a certain value and the reserve policy indicates that we should try to budget uh, a specific amount, and that's only because, let's say we have to draw on that again in twenty-one and bring it down again, so the amount that we put in gets circumvented by the amount that gets right from it out. If you don't have it in budget and you're always relying on a surplus to replenish that public, that reserve, it's not as it's not, it's not as solid of a, of a plan, I guess. The reserve policy indicates a specific number of contribution each year. And sometimes you're better to go without it as opposed to trying to rely on it.
But again, to proceed along your line of thinking, you could put a motion on the floor that of the one hundred and thirty-two projected surplus of twenty twenty, that thirty-five thousand be transferred to that account and the balance allocated as per policy. You can do that.
Let's hear what everybody else has to say.
Well, everybody's got something to say. Okay, chair's looking for direction here and discussion. I'm gonna wind it up. I can't let this go all night. Yeah, Councilor.
I, I, I would defer to Counselor Hunter with his, with it, with his idea, uh.
Okay, so Counselor Hunter, you might have a seconder if you put your motion forward. Sounds to me like you would.
Yeah, I know. I like, uh, Deputy Mayor's.
Ah.
I know. I do like Deputy Mayor's. Oh, yours, Mr. Hunter, I'm sorry. But I do like to take that out of the
Now, I'm just gonna ask the quick, the, the treasurer a quick question. If if the thirty-five, if, if, if we proceeded along the idea that Counselor, uh, the, excuse me, the Deputy Mayor, Deshaun is, is pursuing. And, and put the thirty-five thousand into the reserve. Right? What would that do to the tax levy increase?
So if you're not adding the twenty thousand, you're at one point nine.
You're at one point nine, right? We're not adding the twenty, so we're at one point nine. Okay, so there's the implication of that.
Which is below two.
Which is below two. Well, that's because one point nine is less than two, okay? All right, uh, folks, we're, we're having an interesting discussion here. Mr. Radley and Mr. Robertson haven't spoken up yet.
Okay, so, uh, referring to the discussion about taking money from the surplus proposal here. Um, whereas on page forty, staff was recommending paying twenty-one, twenty thousand from the budget. If you take thirty-two from the surplus, can we leave the twenty back in the budget then?
No.
No, that's not, that's not what the, uh.
This, the way that is.
So where does the twenty go?
The, the twenty just disappears because we're not, it was a cons- it was a concept that we would raise that.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't be raising.
So that has an impact on the tax rate.
And we don't do the additional twenty.
Yeah.
About one point nine.
Mr. Robertson, you're on the spot.
I could live with the one point nine.
Now, that's a roundabout way of.
Well, it accomplishes two objectives. One is to raise that third part.
Yep.
And from the surplus.
Yep.
And you see the tax rate down, it was very, okay, so it's two objectives to accomplish.
Yep.
And so I think this Counselor Hunter's objective is that really.
For this year.
For this year.
Yeah.
For future years, it's not, because you're basing, you're basing a contribution to a reserve.
Yeah.
On the hopes of a surplus.
Yeah.
Right. If you budget for if you budget for a contribution, then it's set within the tax rate. And you don't have to try to raise it over the future year.
Yeah, but it, it's not cast in concrete, so I mean, next year we could say, well, we only have a surplus or a very much of a surplus or whatever. And therefore we have to budget something for that, for that, that reserve.
I'm ready. Um, but it, but in fairness, and, and I, and I accept your side of the argument, but we also taxed uh, that amount, that amount last year based on services that we would be provided. And, uh, a lot of those services weren't provided, especially in recreation. So while I agree, um, with, with the concept, um, the, the residents paid for something last year that due to circumstances beyond anyone's control, uh, that they paid for and didn't receive. So, um, I think in fairness, you know, keeping the tax rate in, in check is, is responsible to taxpayers. And it's, and it's good use of the dollars that they, that they spent last year, uh, anticipating service. And quite honestly, they've even missed some of that service this year as well. I mean, the last, the last month and a, and a bit as well, so. So I'm prepared to, to move that, that motion forward.
Okay, so. Okay, I'm, so Counselor Deshaun, and did you have, okay, I'll, I'll give you the wording. I don't like writing motions at the table in time, but I, I, I just want to get it captured. The committee recommends that thirty-five thousand of the projected twenty-twenty surplus. I'll put in bracket, a hundred and thirty-two. Thirty-five thousand of the projected twenty-twenty surplus be transferred to the tax write-off reserve. Tax write-off reserve. And that the balance of any projected surplus be distributed as per policy. As per existing policy. Now, I got it. Captured in such a way that you can work with it? Didn't say you had to like it.
Through the chair, we, we, we've had a couple of discussions. If, if, if we're, if we're going to work on allocating the, uh, projected surplus. There, the, the, we, we, we were looking at putting seventy thousand back into the winter control reserve.
You still do that?
Well, I'm just saying, if, if, if you're gonna do it, why, what, what, why is it not just added to that?
Oh, and that the balance be put back to the winter.
Well, and, and, and that seventy thousand be put back into the winter control reserve. It's the same motion, instead of us coming back in.
And that the balance of the projected surplus be be transferred to the winter control reserve. Now, Deputy Mayor, it's your motion. Are you prepared to accept that change of wording?
Yeah, it was ninety, ninety-six, ninety-seven, eighty-nine, ninety-seven.
Well, point is, you can never have too much money in your winter controls.
Yes, sure, yeah.
Okay, now, did Deputy Mayor have a, 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 a? He did, he had a second. So Counselor Dillabaw's second. Okay, now. Further discussion remaining?
I'm just lowering the tax rate, break down, just caught, and every year that you don't end up with a sure report, that tax rate increase.
That's the counterargument, question.
You're doing this every year, don't wanna, wanna get over that two percent all the time. You're gonna end up with four or five percent. Look at your graphs, what happened every year when you did it.
No, no, only, and, and you know what? I, I, I have a lot of empathy for the I'm not really trying to stay out of the debate, but there is a, there is a, there is a concept that hasn't been floated here yet, and I think should be brought forward, and that is that all over the county, everybody is trying to keep their tax rates to a zero percent increase because twenty twenty was such a hard year on basically the public. You know, I mean, and I, there's no other way to say it. And, you know, to pick up on a comment you made earlier, I didn't want to bring it in when you were speaking, but tomorrow, we will probably approve county council, county council budget. And it will have a zero percent tax increase. And, and, you know, I mean, there, it was a long, hard fight and, and, and the council was divided pretty much fifty-fifty because of twenty twenty, and we all realize that we have to increase the tax rate. But we got enough of a boost from growth that we were able to accommodate.
And if we had better growth than sixty, seven hundred dollars, I think I would be suggesting that we could probably do zero as well, but
Yep.
We don't have enough of, of, of growth, uh, bit of money to do anything extra.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, that's why we're.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. It's been duly moved and seconded. Uh, I can read the motion back. Anyone who wants to hear it can move back. All right, here's the motion that's on the floor. That committee recommends that thirty-five thousand dollars of the projected twenty-twenty surplus in brackets, one thirty-two be transferred to the tax write-off reserve. And that the balance of the projected surplus be transferred to the winter control reserve. That's the motion that's on the floor. Yeah, there, and, and you, I mean, you remember that at this time, the treasurer is projecting a surplus of one thirty-two. That number will walk, if you go down, who knows? All right, I'm about to call a question. Now, anybody, uh, looking, just a show of hands? Show of hands? Okay, show of hands, those in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, five. And I'll go with it, uh, six, opposed or pending? Okay, so six, one, six in favor. One opposed. Okay, so I think that and the treasurer can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think that basically brings us to a budget, does it not?
So that, uh, that would put your deficit, budget deficit at a hundred and twelve eighty-nine, which is equates to a one point nine one percent.
One point?
Nine one.
One point nine one. All right.
What's the overall everything roughly?
Um, if they uh, I would have to do, I can certainly bring those back to you.
It's actually gonna, the, 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 the impact. It's actually gonna, the, 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 the impact on the taxpayer is going to be less than one point nine.
Yeah.
Because education rate is going down.
Zero. It's not going down, it's zero. There's no change in the education rate for the residential.
Oh, there's no change.
Right. Now, the overall will increase from one point nine because it's not an equal amount.
Yeah.
So we only, uh, we're only about like. Sixty percent of the overall tax rate.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's only gonna be just under around the one percent as a, as an overall tax rate increase will be one point.
One little, a little bit.
It'll be just a little, just slightly over our last year's one point one eight three, so like the total tax rate would probably be like one point one eight. Five or one eight six. It's gonna be minor, a very minor increase in the overall tax.
Okay, so I'm moving on. And the next layer, what's that?
Excuse me before you do, I'd like to revise the capital project, cap, capital budget of a name.
Not possible. Why is it not possible?
You have to go to approve the budget.
We didn't approve budget.
You haven't called the question on the adoption of the.
No, I never called the question on the adoption of the budget. How, how are you gonna change the capital?
Can you hear me out?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to, um. First of all, it's been a long time, anything's been done in the capital budget for several years at South Edwardburg Recreation Hall. We got a new subcommittee doing a lot of work on the uh brick and ball tennis court. And I'd like to make a motion that we take the fifty five thousand dollars from the one ton truck. And put it to capital budget under the recreation. For the South Edwardburg Rec area for that purpose, and take out. The uh brush head for the high hole and put it down forty seven thousand. For the one ton truck. And take seven thousand dollars from the recreation reserve. They give us our fifty five thousand for the one ton truck. And there'd be no tax increase. I didn't think it would be that silent.
Well, this is late for this kind of thing.
Realize it's late for this kind of thing.
And, uh, you know, I mean, we've been through this capital budget many times, and I suspect that the treasurer. I mean, the major premise was fifty thousand from a truck or something. What was the major premise here?
Fifty five thousand for the truck.
But where, where, is the truck in the capital budget right now?
Yes, it is.
Where is it?
Under the public works.
Public works.
Place of the truck that we're putting the box on.
Okay.
The one ton.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the fifty five. So I'm on page sixty two of sixty three.
Yeah.
All right, so the motion would be to remove. The fifty five thousand.
Put it to the recreation capital.
What, just hang on one second.
Okay.
Remove fifty five thousand for. Replacement. Of GMC one ton. And redirect. To what?
The brush head for the high hole.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
It's above it.
Yes and no, but you're removing that as well.
Remove it altogether, yes, putting it down by there.
Okay, well, just a minute now. So you, you, you want to take those two things out of the capital, that's fifty five plus forty eight, right?
All right, yeah, I want to take just the fifty five out of the public works and put it in the recreation capital.
So what's that got to do with the brush head?
Then I want to take the brush head, forty eight thousand, and put it down by the one ton truck, replace the one ton truck. In other words, I want to replace the one ton truck. I don't want to replace the brush head this year.
So you move the brush head over to the recreation. There's only one step required. Move the brush head over to the recreation.
The, the brush had money.
Yeah.
The forty eight thousand.
I give you a forty eight, and I don't know what you want in recreation.
So basically, it's remove the forty eight thousand.
We can do that, remove the forty eight thousand, and then take seven thousand out of uh. Recreation reserve for the fifty five.
Okay, cancel. The purchase. Of brush head for high hole. We're gonna have to vote on this. Cancel the purchase of the brush head high hole. And transfer. The forty eight thousand dollar. To what recreation?
Capital for the record, South Edwardburg Rec area.
Recreation capital.
For the tennis courts and fencing.
To recreation capital for replacement. Of what?
Tennis courts and fencing.
So what would they do to the tennis courts?
Have to be all redone.
So that's also in the port projects list.
Tid, very expensive project.
Okay, so let me get, make sure I got this right. So uh, the essence of it is. Cancel the purchase of the brush head for the, for the high hole. And transfer the forty eight thousand dollars to the recreation capital. For replacement of the tennis courts and fencing at the South Ed Rec Center. Okay, now, you seem to think that the South Ed Rec Center would need more than forty eight. Because you're talking about taking something from reserve account.
Seven thousand and fifty five, I want to take the, I want to get to fifty five, so that's why I want to take the one ton truck out.
Yeah, but what's the budget? I mean, this is, this is very difficult. I'll let the CIO get in here.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, the fifty five thousand that, uh, that's attempted to come up with, that is what portion of the total project costs? I, I don't believe it. It, it, are, are we talking a fifty five thousand dollar total capital project, or are we talking like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital project?
No, no, it won't be two hundred.
What is it?
But I'm gonna say it's gonna be about eighty five thousand total.
I have, this is.
But has there been a scenario?
Yeah.
Pass what, can, can you inform us what it is?
Well, it's going into the port. We won't have enough to do the port. We're not guaranteed, first of all.
What's the port got to do with it?
Well, did we apply for a grant, the port grant?
Oh, the fifty grand from there.
Well, not quite, yeah. And it's gonna be more, and then, and there's no guarantees.
Okay, so.
That's obviously good right of here.
And if somebody sat down and kind of conceptualized what these tennis courts would look like?
Yeah.
No, no, we don't have a project description, that's the problem.
Is it gold on the floor here or what? I mean, people play on grass. We could put dirt in and plant grass. Wimbledon's played on grass. I mean, there's all kinds of uh options. I, I think. We need to, if we're gonna consider a project of that nature, hundred grand roughly. We should build it according to a project plan. In other words. Proposal, design, uh, you know, all that kind of thing. I don't think we just drop it in as, oh, here's a, you know.
Well, the, the councillor is trying to put a motion on the floor. If the motion gets approved, I guess the whole thing will have to go back to staff. If the motion gets defeated, then that ends it.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the point is that right now. The councillor is trying to define a project, put money to a project that hasn't been vetted by staff yet. That's the awkward spot here, because we don't know what the project really is.
And I guess what, I want that capital funding for that project. That's what I'm asking for, forty eight thousand. So that's my motion.
All right, so I have councillor Dillabaw move.
You actually want fifty five, don't you?
No, forty eight be good, forty eight.
No, does councillor Dillabaw have a second or first motion?
So, so your motion is to remove the brush head.
And transfer the forty eight thousand to recreation capital.
Capital.
For replacement of the tennis courts and fencing at the South Ed Rec Center.
Right, I'll, I'll support that.
Mister Mayor, ten years ago, when I was involved with South Edwardburg, they did a survey and found out that there was hardly anybody ever used those tennis courts. And that's one of the reasons that they were never, there was never a lot of money poured back into them.
No, we got fifty five people are interested.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor here. Further discussion. Councillor.
All right, I can, I see where you're coming from, councillor Dillabaw, but it's a little late in the game to start bringing this forward at this point.
Well, that's when you have to deal, I mean, that's what the motion is about. Councillor wanted in?
I don't want to see that brush hog go out. I, I, I want to see, I mean, we argued about this brush hog way back, uh, several meetings ago. And it's going, it's. It's got, it's got the possibility of, if we have a new brush hog, it's, it's going to save us considerable amount of money in contract fees. I, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I can't take the.
I just, I'm see, see. Taking my capital money as one thing that's already been approved to the last one, to go to another one, so. Is there some way councillor Dillabaw, the, the committee that you're talking about, this newly formed committee, could, would consider that, uh. They use the balance of this year to define and, 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 or prospect the project and then put it into the twenty twenty two budget?
Yeah, it's a good idea too.
Well, we're shooting for, we're shooting for one with the ports, we want to see that. That's my motion, people. I'm asking for forty eight thousand.
Do you envision the work being done this summer?
Yeah.
And so it's to. To take tennis courts that aren't usable now and get them back to being usable.
Sorry?
It's to take the tennis courts and get them back to being usable.
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion pending. About to call a question, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a recorded vote on this one. Further discussion. Councillor Dillabaw, how do you vote?
Yay.
Councillor Cameron, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councillor, uh, Sayo is voting nay. Deshaun, how do you vote?
Okay.
Councillor Hunter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Mister Bradley, how do you vote?
I vote nay.
Mister Robertson, how do you vote?
Nay.
Okay, so the vote is two in favor and five opposed.
Mister Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yep.
Uh, I'd like to add that, uh, I think it's a worthy project, uh, and that maybe Mister Dillabaw, or councillor Dillabaw could, uh. Go back to the committee and, and task them with, uh, defining the project and doing feasibility and that type of thing. So that they could come back and get consideration in the twenty twenty two budget.
Well, there's, you know, I mean, once a, the worst step in any project is to get a scope.
Yeah.
And a costing. And, uh, you know, the big thing is, once you've got a scope and a costing and a concept, concept, a scope, a costing, and you know where you stand. Then money can come up in, in the middle of a budget year as well, you know? Okay, so now, uh, I, I, that wasn't on the agenda, but I'm, I'm moving now to eight. To item eight on the agenda, which is council inquiries notices a motion. So does anybody have anything to bring forward there?
Mister Mayor, sort, sort, sort of early, I just, I'm just not clear. And do you, if, if, if the intent that staff would bring a per, per council resolution. Uh, for the budget to be adopted with a one point nine percent increase?
Uh, I don't know that we had, that we defined a number. We provided guidance on the basis of two recommendations that were received. And, and, and I think what has to happen now is the staff has to go back and work the numbers. I don't want to put a, a, an amount like a one point nine percent. Uh, in a, etched in stone in a motion or anything, or even in minutes, because when you come down to it, the best that we can say is that, is that the treasurer. Uh, anticipates or projects or estimates that that will result, that the two things that we've done here tonight. Will result in about a one point nine percent tax increase. I think that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think. You'd need time to analyze your numbers before you come to that, to that definitive percentage.
Well, actually, no, um, because the, the budget as it stands before we did the fifty added was, was sixty two, eight sixty nine. Add the fifty is a hundred and twelve, eight sixty nine, which is a one point nine one percent increase.
So what, okay, so if you're telling me that that's what it is, what is, what is your point?
I, 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 I guess I'm wondering if the committee is, 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 is wanting to pass that, so that it can go to council at the March, uh, council meeting.
Well, that's basically what you've got.
Well, we didn't, but it wasn't voted on, we didn't invite the committee.
Okay.
That's all, that, that, that's all.
Okay, well, um, I don't know how to capture that. Um.
There's a recommendation, right?
What's that?
There's a rec. Sorry. You want to go?
You were saying the same thing.
Yeah, the recommendation is the committee recommends that council adopt twenty twenty one budget estimates with a two point two five. Uh, if you switch that to one point nine one, uh, increase in the two thousand and two residential tax rate.
Oh, I get you. I see where you're looking. Sorry, my, my, my bad.
You just have to amend the number.
Okay, so you're gonna make the recommendation, give me the numbers then.
Sure, so, uh, I, I will make, uh, the recommendation that we change the two point two five to one point nine one.
All right, so you're back on page fifty seven. It's dealing with the recommendation that's on the, on, in the briefing, no?
Yes. Do I need to move a motion to amend that first?
No, because it's, it'll just come forward however you bring it forward.
Okay, so, um, I'll make the recommendation, the committee recommends that council adopt twenty twenty one budget estimates with a one point nine one percent. Increase in the two thousand and twenty one residential tax rate.
Okay, all right, now, need a second. Okay, councillor Cameron is second. I, I see, I apologize, I, I didn't realize what you were getting at here. I, I missed this, this point.
That's, that's okay, I, I, I could have been clearer.
No. I could have been less dense. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on.
Can you record it?
Oh, okay, now, that's an interesting one. Yes, I can, but just give me a second. Uh, okay, a ca, uh, to the clerk, have you got a sheet there with, in front of you to record the vote? Oh, you, okay, well, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call the vote then and, and ask them how, how they vote. So councillor Dillabaw, how do you vote?
Yay.
And councillor Cameron, how do you vote?
Yay.
And Sayo will vote yay. De, de, deputy mayor Deshaun, how do you vote?
Nay.
And councillor Hunter, how do you vote?
Nay.
Nay. And, uh, Mister Bradley, how do you vote?
Yay.
And Mister Robertson, how do you vote?
Yay.
Okay, and so now we have six, one. Motion carries six in favor, one opposed. And that's the, that's the budget that will come forward at the council meeting at the end of the month, right? Right? Okay. All right, so now, where am I? I'm lost again.
Too many hurdles.
Too many hurdles. I've ducked and weaving here. I've ducked and weaving, I can't stay out of the line of fire. Okay. So I was at item eight, which is council inquiries notices a motion. Nothing coming forward there. And so item nine is the mayor's report. I'll just make a very quick report. Uh, and I'll say more about each of these things, uh, in the committee meeting, the in-camera session that's going to follow. But because this is a public meeting, I want to put some of these things on the record. So, uh, just the first point is, I'm, I'm reporting to, to the meeting. That I am told that the Farrengruber land option, uh, with mega holdings. Has either expired or been terminated. Uh, second item, on March the. On March the first, twenty twenty-one, uh, Mr. Grant and I had a Zoom meeting with Infrastructure Ontario uh, concerning the potential and possible purchase of the ten thousand acre Edwardsburg Land Bank. That's public information. Those discussions are ongoing. The next meeting with Infrastructure Ontario will be on March the fifteenth. And, uh, we will be meeting with a vice president and a senior vice president. And I can say to the meeting that Infrastructure Ontario appears to be motivated to divest. And then, last thing, I'll just a short report on the job site challenge. So the province announced the name of the site selector uh, who has been hired to help the province evaluate the ten finalists. To this date, we've had no word or report or contact from the site selector. There has been no announcement from Minister Sarkaria or from, uh, Minister Fideli, Fideli regarding the top ten finalists. And we remain optimistic and are continuing with our plans to develop a program for meeting with the site selector. So that's the mayor's report. And, uh, one, just one final thing you may be interested in. A little bit of county work that's going to be done on County Road forty-four. Uh, and it's going to start, uh, it's going to start four hundred and, five hundred and forty meters north of Totem Ranch Road and come southerly for five point two five kilometers. And it will be a slurry seal treatment on that section of County Road forty-four. Estimated value of a hundred thousand dollars. And that's basically the extent of the road we're, uh, that's going to be in, in our township this year. County work this year. Now, there's some other stuff going on, and, uh, I've already spoken to Mr. Grant about the, uh, the spring program. And I think there was one other thing, but I can't remember what it was. All right, so I'm at item number ten, question period. I see there's no public here. And there is a closed session, and I'm looking for the motion to go into the closed session.
I'm myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Daychamp. Many proceed into closed session at eight forty-two in order to address a matter pertaining to one section two thirty-nine, two C, proposed pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local boards specifically industrial land in minutes of closed session dated January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, two, section two thirty-nine, two K, position, plan, procedure, criteria or instructions to be applied to any negotiation carried on, to be care- carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board specifically job site challenge. And three, section two thirty-nine, two E, litigation or potential litigation including matters before administration tribunal affecting municipalities specifically bell claim.
Okay, and, uh, those in favor going into the closed session, motion is carried, and
Meeting, uh, committee is now adjourned and open meeting is now resumed at nine thirty-two P M.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And, uh, so now I'll report out from the closed session, and Counselor, uh, Dilavah has a motion to bring forward.
I flew by myself and seconded by, uh, Counsel Cameron, the committee receives and approves the closed session minutes dated January eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
And, move in favor?
Aye.
That's carried. And then just, uh, reporting further from the closed session, uh, council uh, was brought up to date on our discussions with Infrastructure Ontario at the upcoming meeting. And the potentiality of purchase of land. That's it. So now, I'm looking for the motion to adjourn.
And I have that, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dilavah, that meeting is now adjourned at nine thirty-four P M.
Close in favor?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you very much.